Sorry, message.
Welcome to our March 24, 2015, 4:00 PM Gilbert Town Council Study Session. Are we here to conduct town business or to compare our March basketball brackets? Town business, town business, alright. I wanted to begin, because this may impact some discussions, Agenda Item Number 25, and this is related to some of the definitions of hospitals and so forth that we've been working on for quite some time. A meeting this morning, so this is new information for the council meeting this morning, there are a couple of additional items that are being researched. There is a discussion on Thursday, the state capitol, that could impact this. And so, there is a suggestion, I've talked to our town attorney, I've talked to Jordan about it, about on Thursday night, continuing this to another meeting. Probably, Mike, would you say?
Probably Mayor, members of the council, probably the May 20th meeting.
Okay.
Because that'll give a chance for the, any new legislation to have been passed and the governor to have signed by that date.
And we have talked with some of the individuals that have been very actively working with us on this, and they're fine with that, so. Any comments from other council members? We'll plan on that Thursday night, then, to have it moved, to continue to the May 20th meeting, okay. Alright, so that may impact some of our discussion here. Now, Mark behind you, Kurt is up during a teleconference right now, there's a PowerPoint slide he's going to bring up. If you see it up there, we'll go for it, if not, we'll move on. It had to do with the town council assignments. For the council, this is proposed, assignments for Thursday night to begin with. And, take a look at that. All in favor, say aye. Okay, excellent, thanks, Jordan. Well, that's not till later, that's not till later, that's later on the agenda. And if you have additional questions, we can work on that offline, and you can work with Vicki. The next thing on this first agenda item for the town council is related to Thursday night. Are there some items, and realize that on our study session, Agenda Item Number Four is Agenda Item Number 15 on Thursday night, so we'll hold off on Agenda Item 15, but are there additional agenda items that you would like to have discussed at this point in preparation for Thursday night? Okay, I'll bring up one, and that would be on Agenda Item Number 30 and some discussions. Rod, I'm not sure if I see Melanie, there's a, well, no, I was going to say, let's wait for Thursday night, but if you could just plan on two or three minutes Thursday night, I think it would also be appreciated to make sure that citizens have a chance to get an overview on 30. So I didn't have any questions, I just felt like it would be good to have that for public consumption. I will make note of, this might be more on report from Mayor and current events, that we did have a couple of events even today, and I wanted to thank our fire and rescue team members that were down at the annual water safety day at the Chandler-Gilbert Community College. There were a thousand first graders that were participating in the water safety day, and many of our Gilbert Fire Rescue Team members, and we thank them, and some of our volunteers from our fire and rescue team. Also, we thank our, the chamber, for their role with our red carpet leadership bus tour, and our illustrious town manager was the speaker at the end of that. And he talked about Gilbert today and Gilbert in the future, and did a fantastic job. And council member Bridget Peterson was there attending, and we thank her for that. This could be something that, well, I'll just mention a few of these items, and then offline with council member Taylor and council member Daniels will follow up on this, but there is tomorrow night at the senior, at the Southeast Regional Library from 6:00-8:30 PM, the sports field needs assessment, and community is invited to that. Saturday, the Kapow superhero race will take place. Vice Mayor Ray, if you could talk to me after about whether you could be available at 10, 10:30 range to stop by for, I'll be there earlier, but then I'm going to another event, and we'll talk and give you details on that. Global Villages Festival is on Saturday, April 11th, and that's also our Forest City where we are Gilbert Service Day, rock and roll band competition, and I don't know, council member Peterson, anything on the, we are Gilbert Service Day that we need to talk about at this point? I know Thursday night, we can also bring that up. Those are more community events, and then just for the council, well, this is also a community event, this Saturday, the Ironwood Cancer Center Survivor Day Breakfast, we're invited to that, and I think that you've seen information on that. And then, a week from Tuesday, 7:30 AM at the Southeast Regional Library, related to follow-up on our needs assessment, there will be building a healthy Gilbert mental health discussion. And at this point, just checking with council members, you've seen details on that, okay? And then, April 7th, a week from that, a week from next Tuesday, is an East Valley Mayor's Per Breakfast Event, all of us are invited to that. And then, I think I'll just pass this out right now, Wednesday, April the 8th, Gilbert Education Foundation has a fundraiser, you're all invited. Or, if you're not a golfer, your assignment is to pass it on to someone. And council member Daniels, your assignment up there for Thursday night, and we had no other request to talk about specific agenda items, and so let me just check with council member Daniels, did you have anything? Okay, thank you. So, to the study session agenda, we'll move to item number two, and Jordan, I think you'll be leading that discussion on land development code updates related to the single-family residential guest parking. Please.
Thank you, Mayor and council, I was just checking to see if Jackson was here from the Home Builders Association, and it looks like he's either running late or is so satisfied with efforts today that he decided to skip the meeting.
And for the council to know, Jackson did make contact with Mayor's office, and he had two or three minutes of comments to make, and we'll just plan on him at the end.
Great, thank you, Mayor, members of town council, and I can certainly communicate for Jackson if he can't attend, but, so by way of quick background, Mayor and council approved Z1415-C earlier this year. That approval came with a couple of follow-up or to-do items for staff, and so the focus of this very quick presentation is just to talk about those follow-up items. So, in approving Z1415-C, which is guest parking requirements and regulation for compact single-family, town council, through the discussion, heard testimony from the Home Builders Association, that there were some immediate clarification issues that needed to be addressed, that's this implementation memo I'll talk about. There's the actual parking plan requirements, and we'll show what the parking plan looks like. And then, the Home Builders Association really focused on a couple of key items in terms of going forward. One was their interest in being involved in the actual evaluation, what are those metrics? How does staff come back in a year and tell town council, good, bad, other? So we'll talk about those issues a little bit. And then, their big issue, which was somewhat unrelated to guest parking, but still an issue nonetheless, was how we regulate the design of garages, their width relative to the width of a house, the front of the house. And then finally, the Home Builders Association wanted to make sure that there would be some opportunity for continued dialogue on all things regulatory related to home building, and so down the road, there'd be some brown bag or joint meeting between staff and the Home Builders Association. So I'll just quickly walk through all five of those to-dos. This is the memo approximately two weeks after town council ratified the guest parking requirements, staff finalized and formalized the memo, it was received by the Home Builders Association, and they've given us two thumbs up on the interpretive utility of that memo. The parking plan is now in place, and if you look on our website now, under our pre-plat checklist, you will see this information with a sample matrix that you could use for a larger project, and then the actual plan sheet requirements that you put into your parking plan. All of these requirements, all this language already exists in the pre-plat checklist today, so we're not asking for any additional information or anything like that, there's no new costs associated with the parking plan. The third element, and this really gets into what the Home Builders Association wanted us to focus on today, and that is, one, the evaluation program, so when town council gets a report back from staff in about a year's time, we'll have that data on how this ordinance worked or didn't, or could use improvement, and so we started to identify what our goals for that evaluation would be, obviously effectiveness, customer impact, and the efficiency of the process. The criteria we would use is obviously how this regulation's been perceived, and then, you know, literal, direct and induced cost benefits, we try to analyze that for town council. And then, the data points, we'll have a lot of data in a year's time on this, just using our own management information systems, and then it's very easy to do a quick survey, too, to our customers, to see what kind of qualitative data we may have missed with those data points. So, the heart of the matter really is, the Home Builders Association in general has a concern with municipalities and their regulation towards three-car garages, and the width, the front width of the house, the minimum that must be there to get to a three-car garage. Specifically, the Home Builders Association wants to have the ability to do a three-car garage, a 24-foot wide garage, on a 50-foot wide lot. Our design guidelines break this issue into really two sections, low density and medium density. In low density, and I apologize if this is difficult to read, but in low density, we say, the assumption is 40%. If you give us design embellishments, and we'll kind of show what those are, you can get above 40%. In medium density, we don't really address this issue, we provide a graphic that shows a 50% ratio, 50% garage to house front. So, to make a long story short, we're not as concerned about this ratio in the medium density projects, and we can kind of talk about why that is, but the main point here is, the Home Builders Association concern with Gilbert specifically, and our treatment of this issue, is probably a non-issue, because we can point to projects where we've achieved exactly what it is the Home Builders Association wants. So in talking to Jackson and following up on this issue, it's really more of just another memo, where we can clarify, how do you get to 40%, and how do you get above 40%? Is it, you know, for instance, this project, you're seeing the eyebrows above the garage, the third door is recessed from the primary garage door, the column width, et cetera. So there's all these architectural features that you can have a relatively narrow house and do a three-car garage, and aesthetically, it looks good. This is another example, again, where we're at, 24-foot garage on a 50-foot wide house, this is Gateway Ranch. And now, I'm sure in this third example, this is probably more common for the town of Gilbert, that 37%, less than 40% is really what you're going to see as you drive around the community. I would guess, housing stock in Gilbert that looks like this is probably 1% to 2% of our total housing stock. So, it's an issue, the builders want to be able to have this creativity, is it something they want to build, lot, 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 probably not. So, the product of this fourth component, or this fourth follow-up item, will just be a clarifying memo. Home Builders Association has said that that would meet their needs. And then finally, this follow-up, whatever we want to call it, but roundtable opportunity to just, whatever near-term and long-term issues the builders have, start to kind of vet those and see what those are, and scope out what that work will look like over time. And so, in summary, there's a little bit of a to-do list here, we'll formalize this memo, clarifying what we just talked about, we'll look for that builders' meeting here in the next two, three months as determined, and finally, that program evaluation, we want to be able to give town council kind of an informed view in a year of how this worked, and where we might need to improve. These other items, probably a little bit aggressive of staff to put these on, but still, it's good to plan big, dream big. So with that, staff is happy to answer any questions at this time. Again, the Home Builders Association is very comfortable with where staff is at at this point, and I'm sorry, Jackson isn't here, but I think he would echo my sentiments, but again, staff is happy to answer any questions or address any concerns.
I guess my question for Lisa, are you adding number four and five into the minutes of this study session? Okay.
Hate to jinx the.
And my understanding was that Jackson wanted also, because he was actively involved in this discussion at the last council meeting, was very supportive, very appreciative, and he did have some questions about the 40%, which I think you've just answered. Other questions from the council? Thank you. We will move to the next item on the study session agenda, the fiscal 2016 budget process update. Dawn, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the council, I'm Dawn Marie Buckland with the Office of Management and Budget. I have with me today, actually, a couple of special guests, our fire chief and director of our Department of Fire and Emergency Services, Jim Joe Bush, and our CIO and director of the Information Technology Department, Mark Kramer. So, as we met last year to talk about the upcoming budget process for fiscal year 2016, we talked with council about what some of those goals were moving forward. As council knows, we always begin with those strategic initiatives and our goals, and establish our goals and objectives accordingly. But what's really important is that we ensure that we not just have these large looming goals before us, that we can package our budget requests into, but we take the time to really and truly decide how we're going to focus those efforts to really maximize our effectiveness for the next year. So, we are coming upon that time of year where we're going to begin conversations here with the council and the public related to that, but we wanted to give you a quick overview of where we're at today. So I'd like to quickly invite the fire chief and our CIO up here to talk a little bit about where we're at in the budget process, and actually, I think I'll just turn it over. Who's going to be first?
To Chief Joe Bush, to talk about the executive team's role in the budget process this year.
Mayor and council, it's good to see you this afternoon. The process for budget development in Gilbert has really kind of grown into a year-long endeavor. This year in particular, because we're in a zero-based year, so we've gone back and dismantled our budgets and rebuilt them from the bottom up. And so, this process for fiscal year 16 actually began last June with the formation of a committee that involved several directors and budget analysts, and we sat down over a course of several meetings and laid out the process for the budget development for fiscal year 16. In September, we began that process in the departments. Each department was tasked with going and, as I mentioned, tearing their budget apart, looking at everything they have in their budget, making sure that what we were doing was the correct thing, and making sure that we were matching our expenditures to our lines of service, and to the strategic initiatives that council adopted. Departments work closely with each of their respective analysts in developing that budget, and our budget requests were really, they were categorized into one of four, or into four categories, first one being zero-based, those items that were necessary to make sure that we could continue to provide the level of service that we provide today. What would it take to continue doing what we're doing today, tomorrow? The second category was FTEs, any additional FTEs that were required, not only to maintain the service level, but also to improve service levels if necessary. Any additional requests that departments had, which included, there were a number of those that were one-time and ongoing, and those would be requests that were, the departments felt were important to continue to provide a high level of service and improve services, and prepare for the future. So, as we see growth, we're trying to anticipate the needs in fiscal year 16, really, over a year in advance, and make sure that we can match the demands of our citizens moving forward. And then, CIP was the final category that we included. All the budget requests were compiled, and then, directors were given the task of reviewing every single request made by their peers. So each of us had to go through each, every department's request, line by line, and ask any questions that we had moving forward. And a couple of reasons for that, one is to understand what was really in the budget and what our peers were asking for, and the other was so that we could hopefully shorten the amount of time that the staff would have to take to process all those requests and make recommendations to the manager's office. And so we spent a couple of months, a little over a month, doing that, and in that process, we asked each other's questions, each other questions, and they were answered, and then they were posted, so we could all see them and be prepared for the meetings. In February, directors began the review process, we met over the course of the entire month of February, twice a week, so we ended up having seven meetings, about 50 hours worth of meetings, to review the requests in the fiscal year 16 budget. Part of that time was also spent looking back at fiscal year 15 and making some judgments on how we had done. Couple of things I want to talk about also, is that, some of the focus this year, we paid a lot of attention to capacity, not only financial capacity of the organization, but do the support departments have the capacity to support what the requests were, HR, IT, and so forth? So we spent a lot of time talking about that, and using that as part of the filter as we looked at these requests. And then, we also spent time really understanding where we were at with the long-range infrastructure plan, and how that would impact our future, and how we needed to budget for that, and including vehicle replacement, and also deferred maintenance. And we know, there's been discussed amongst yourselves at times about the deferred maintenance over the years, especially during the economic downturn, so we wanted to make sure we were focusing on that, and giving those items their fair shake as well. So, as I mentioned, we spent February reviewing those, we put together a list of recommendations, those recommendations have been passed along, they were presented to the manager and deputy manager, now they're going through their review process, where they're spending time asking questions, sitting with directors, and then through that process, they'll finalize the recommendations that'll come forward to you. A couple of things also I'll add is the process and analyzing how this process has worked for us. So there are a couple of pros and cons that we identified along the way. On the pro side, it's, in a way, it's a con also, but there's a lot of time that's required of staff to analyze and work through the budget process, in particular during a zero-based year, but it's also very educational, and not just for the directors, but for our other senior staff members in the departments, because they're involved in this process as well. So they learn a lot about what goes on in their own departments, but also what's going on in other departments. We've included the second-in-command group in the review of the FTEs, so they got a chance to look at them and make recommendations as well. It also ensures alignment with the strategic initiatives and the organizational goals and the lines of service. And, again, it gives us the opportunity to review the expenditures more thoroughly during the zero-based year. And then, again, the single con that we really had was the time intensity that's involved in this process. So that's where we're at today, no details as of yet, because it's still being worked on, but it was an excellent process for us to go through, and I think that the product, you can appreciate the product once it's finalized. Be happy to answer any questions. I've given Mark a break, he's, he was the reluctant co-chair, he missed a meeting, so he had to be the co-chair, so I'm going to take the hit today.
Council member Daniels?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to put you on the spot for just a second, chief, this having been the second time that we've done the zero-based process, is this your first time at the director level to have been part of this process? I can't recall, I don't recall.
I was split last time, I was partly involved and partly not.
So, second time around, what improvements have been made from the first time around? And, in addition to that, if you were to be back into your old position, how would you, what would you want to say to the rest of the employees about this process as far as maybe surprises, or what changes at the director level? Because I think sometimes you guys see it differently than maybe a rank-and-file employee might, and so, I think trying to both add value and provide an explanation for why we do this the way that we do.
To answer your first question, I think that the improvement we're seeing, and part of this is just from year to year, kind of sticking to a process now, and not overhauling it every year, so it's getting more familiar, and we've tried to, going back to starting in June, part of that reason was so that we could lay out a plan that everybody could be ready for, and it would be easier for us to get through. The second part, or your second question, I think that from a director level, you, it's very easy for us to have these discussions and to make these decisions. And you really have to force yourself to talk to those that are below you in the organization that really have responsibility for the budget. And as an example, my staff developed our budget, I didn't. So, they did it, a similar process as we've done as directors, they've done that, and I know other departments incorporated the same kind of process, especially the larger ones, where those involved in doing the work and understanding what needs to be done are the ones that are developing the budget. So, it, over the last couple of years, I've really seen that movement down in the organization, and better understanding by the employees of how the budget works, and how other departments work.
So in many ways, you're saying that it's actually being built from the bottom up, not necessarily from the top down?
In many ways, yeah, maybe the middle up. I mean, it's not getting all the way down, in some departments it may, but in others it's not, but yes, you're correct, it's not, it's not a top-down process anymore.
Thank you.
Council member Cook?
Chief, when you review the lines of services that you currently have, and you've gone through the process, is there a line of service that didn't make the cut, that you feel you wish there was more dollars for?
Yeah, offhand, I'm not sure that I could name one, yeah, yeah. But I will tell you that, and I failed to mention it before, is that, like any other year, the request outpaced the available revenue. And there were, there were a number of worthy requests that didn't get funded, just because there was, there's no physical way to do it. Other requests, though, weren't accepted as well, or recommended as well, because of the capacity issues we have in the organization. So, the answer sort of is yes, there are items, but I couldn't name one specifically today.
And Mayor and chief, if I may add to that, one of the things that was really impressive about the leadership that really emerged through this process, was early on, that subcommittee that chief had spoken of, had laid out some ground rules about how we would proceed, and in those ground rules, and the entire executive team committed to being able to support the decisions that were made there. And in so doing, determined that that meant we would continue to talk through an item until everybody in that room could support it going forward. If there, that doesn't mean that you agree with it, or that's exactly how you would have done it by yourself, but if there is a single person in that room that just could not support it, we did not leave the room until we were at a point in which we could do so. So at the end of the day, there may be some things that individually we would have looked at a little bit differently, but as a whole, we can all look at this budget and say, this is the best budget for the town of Gilbert.
So we took our values, respect was at the top, but we also added play fair and hold hands and stick together, something like that. And Dawn, I thought that was really nice when the chief summarized his feelings, he said this, "We've learned that the budget process is a year-long endeavor," and then he smiled. I'm not sure what that meant, but.
And we have that on camera, Mayor, so we may be able to use that in the future.
I've been working on smiling more, so I'm trying to find the right place for it.
Well, it was right after the word endeavor. Any other comments for the chief right now, and then Dawn will continue, Dawn, please, continue?
Thank you, Mayor, and I know we have a pretty full agenda today, so we'll keep this one relatively brief, but wanted to give the council some expectations. Number one, I also wanted to share a couple of observations that I had from this process overall. I had the honor recently to speak at Government Finance Officers Association, our national headquarters, in front of people from 60 other governmental agencies from around the country. And as I was talking about our process here, they were all in awe of the fact that we could bring our leadership together, group together, and break down silos in the way that we have. When we say that we are striving to be best-in-class in all lines of service in Gilbert, what you're seeing right now is that we're actually setting that bar, and people are reaching out to us now, because we are starting to define what best-in-class really means. And it's just such a tremendous. And it's just such a tremendous reflection on the part of this entire organization. As Chief mentioned, from the middle management up, or middle, from the supervisor level on up, contributing into the budget process, and in many cases, actually getting down into the line level. Integrating a lot of the things that each of you have expressed an interest in, the conversations that occur at that table because of that process and because of their commitment to that process. We talked about integrating contracts. How do we optimize our use of contracts? We talked about how do we manage to continue to move forward with a lean organization, but not let our services decline, not push people to burnout? How do we address some of the needs within the organization, but do it in a manner that's consistent with the policy levels that council has set before us? And we've reached out to our counterparts in other organizations in Arizona, throughout the entire country, again, looking at what's best-in-class in various areas, and how do we bring that back to Gilbert and make that possible right here? So it was absolutely amazing to be a part of that, and I wanted to share that as well. Wanted to also give you a sense of what some of the next steps are, so that you can, you know what to expect. There's a study session in April. We'll be coming back with some more detail about the budget itself. So over the next couple of weeks, the manager's office is reviewing all of those budget requests, again, asking some additional follow-up questions, ensuring that the budget that we bring before you is consistent with the policies and the direction of the town of Gilbert and is the leanest, most efficient manner of addressing those types of services and service levels. The tentative budget adoption is slated for May 14th. And again, I wanted to remind you that the tentative budget adoption in the state of Arizona is the single most important action that we take because it actually sets the maximum level of budget that we can have for the next year. After that, council can change items within the budget or decrease the budget, but we cannot increase that budget legally after it's adopted on the May 14th. So that is, that's a very important date to keep in mind. And we'll be following up with the June 4th council meeting. That'll be your final budget adoption, as well as the adoption of the 10-year capital improvement program. And again, staff is working very, very diligently to make sure that the capital improvement program, the operating budget, and all of the components of the budget are tied up neatly and ready to go for your review here over the next few weeks. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Peterson?
I have a question I ask every year, and it's just about the timeframe that we'll have to kind of review it. Now, with most packets, we have about a week, about a week, a little more than a week to review. Is it possible preceding the May 14th date that we could have a little longer, maybe with just the budget part of that? I always like more time rather than less, everyone knows that, but it is really helpful that we can have time to really study it and understand it, ask a lot of questions, and be ready to adopt.
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, we absolutely understand that we'll make every effort to make as much information available to you as early as possible. Last year, one of the things that we discussed was ensuring that you had the information that you needed to make that decision on May 14th at that high level. There are certain requirements that we have in terms of processing those schedules and such. Information, for example, that we just received from the state a couple of days ago, a lot that goes into now finalizing those details and getting that to you. So I want to make sure that that information is accurate and tied out and reconciled in every which way possible. So what my request back is, we'll get you as much as we can, as quickly as we can, but we want to make sure that it's accurate information. For the May 14th, again, the objective for that is to set that maximum amount. And then at that point in time, you'll already have all of the detail, so you'll be able to review and make those refinements between May 14th and June 4th, as long as we didn't need to increase the overall budget. Would that be sufficient?
Yeah, it would. And let me first of all recognize, it's a lot of work. I mean, it's been a year-long process, I understand that. So I just want to reiterate that desire to have the information as early as possible. And I do know that we have, I guess, another couple of weeks before final. It's just never enough time, is it? I mean, it's just never enough. I'm never satisfied. I don't know what the problem is.
Councilmember Peterson, we feel the same way about never enough time.
Thank you.
It's a year-long endeavor, right? Now, April 28th, Tuesday, is a study session. Do you have an estimate what percent of the budget we would see on that night?
On April 28th, Mayor, we should have a very substantial amount of the budget ready for you, for your review on that evening. As a matter of fact, because we'll be looking at the May 14th council meeting, we'll hopefully have, we'll have as much detail for you on that evening as possible. Again, we'll get information out as it's available on those higher levels. Some of those last-minute details in terms of finalizing what our debt service payments are for the next year, making sure that we understand the indirect cost allocations for each of the departments. There's a lot of little details that really we can't even begin until those last couple of weeks of April.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, I want to express thanks and appreciation. Dawn and I've had a couple of discussions already, and I just appreciate her willingness to listen and be open. You know, I made a commitment to the voters when I ran to just share some of the best practices that I've learned in business, and I'm kind of handing some of those ideas. Some of them fit better than others, but I just appreciate her willingness to listen and be open. She alluded to some contracts. We're talking about some non-employee labor management that would actually increase our quality, but decrease our costs, and some things that I've done in the past that may or may not benefit. So I just appreciate that. I also wanted to ask if you could just maybe give us a 15, 20-second summary of maybe what the impact of the recent state budget might be on our budget, if you can shoehorn it into 15 to 20 seconds.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to do so. And we may need to defer some of those specific questions to the Intergovernmental Affairs Office as well, depending on where we wanted to go with that. Overall, though, we've seen some of the bills that were submitted and that might have reduced their state shared revenues. And our Intergovernmental Affairs Office has been working on those diligently throughout the course of the legislative season. The recent budget that was released did include some cost sharing, if you will, for cities and towns to cover the cost of the state's Department of Revenue operations, particularly as it refers to the collection of sales tax on behalf of the cities and towns. So they are looking at allocating some of those costs out to the cities and towns. We have the specific numbers. I don't have them right in front of me, so I'd be happy to send those numbers out. Those are incorporated into the, all of the information that we're submitting to the manager's office in terms of a recommended budget. So as we looked at those costs, those are factored in, additional costs related to retirement and the PS PRS system specifically. Everything that's come out of both legislative, statutory requirements, settlements, and then the governor's budget are all incorporated into that recommended budget.
Councilmember Peterson?
I do want to say thank you. It's a huge amount of work, and I know we are setting the bar, and I want to acknowledge that, and I appreciate that very much. I know I'm a squeaky wheel, but I'd be even squeakier in some other municipality, I swear I would. So thank you for what you do. I really do appreciate it.
Thank you. Mayor, Council, we have the most amazing team here at every level, we really do. And we often hear how others in other municipalities hear about how great it is to be in Gilbert and be a part of this team, and that really starts at your level with your leadership. And while I appreciate your thanks, you know, to Councilmember Taylor's point, the fact that each of you is willing to share your experience and expertise, the fact that we have conversations early on so that we understand your direction and we're able to build a budget accordingly, really makes all of the difference in the world. Because we're working together as a team. I think Councilmember Cook coined the term "one team." And that's really what the goal is here, is that this budget is reflective of what this team is trying to accomplish for the next fiscal year.
Thank you. Councilmember Cook?
Without revealing anything, I know I've made a couple of requests about the budget. Would you have any good news or whatever to share based upon our discussions? Or should we have it offline, or how do you want to proceed?
Those were all denied.
All denied, okay.
Actually, Council-
One-team denial.
It was a collaborative denial. Actually, Councilmember Cook, if you wanted to share, we've had a few different conversations, so if you wanted to be more specific about-
Yeah, I think some of the things that, you know, after, you know, being on, you know, serving one term, you know, we've talked a lot about a, having a very healthy financial foundation. And I've been very excited and very proud that as a team, over the last three and a half years, you know, we've pretty much have established that. And one of the things that I've been working and sharing with Dawn for a while is the thought of, are there any of our privileged sales tax that we might look at that we could possibly reduce or lessen or even get rid of? That doesn't have a significant impact to the overall budget, but, you know, we threw out a couple of different ideas, potentially looking at maybe no food tax, or maybe a food tax, no, zero food tax, maybe introducing a use tax that's internet-related, you know, just different types of ideas. And I just, it's curious to see how the team has, you know, maybe progressed through some of those ideas and maybe what you've come up with.
And Mayor, Councilmember Cook, where, so Councilmember Cook had offered up some discussion and discourse related to all of those things that he had mentioned. What was very interesting about that was, I think, the idea that came out of that, of ensuring that we set up the right structure for this community and that we don't just simply do business the way we've always done business because that's how it's been done. And so Councilmember Cook had shared many different ideas of ways that we could look into that. That is something that continues to be up for discussion. Again, not just on the revenue side there, but on our policy side, on the way that we do business, looking at lean six sigma, every aspect of that right now is being, is being looked into. So the budget that is, as it's represented right now, maintains the sales tax rate as it currently stands, but we certainly look forward to additional conversations about ensuring that the revenue structure that we have here for Gilbert is right for Gilbert today, not Gilbert 10 years ago. And that as we look ahead with our long-range infrastructure program, our repair and replacement reserves, and all of those things that you've worked so hard to establish and build for this community, that we continue to look at what is right here.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you, Dawn. Before we move to agenda item number four, Jackson, did you still want to make a comment? I know you missed what Jordan presented. The answer is yes. So come on down. And this is back to agenda item number two. And please, and it's not the formal council meeting, but at the same time for the minutes, if you can state your name and which organization you represent.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. My name is Jackson Mall. I'm the Vice President of Municipal Affairs for the Home Builders Association of Central Arizona. And I guess at this point, there's two things I want to say. The first is my sincere apologies to the Mayor and Council for missing the prior presentation. That was totally my fault, and so I do apologize for that. But since you invited me up, I, what I really had wanted to say was to just express our sincere appreciation to the town, and in particular, to Jordan, for continuing to work with us on these issues that we've talked about with the council. And, you know, the direction that he's provided to us for how he'd like to proceed, I think, is a fantastic suggestion, and it's something that I think is going to, is going to really benefit both the town and our members. So that's all I really wanted to just take the opportunity to say, was just how much the association really appreciates everything that he's done and the direction and leadership that the council's provided on these issues. So just thank you so much.
Thank you, Jackson. Thanks for coming. Agenda item number four, presentation and discussion on the body-worn camera program. Chief Dorn, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tim Dorn, Chief of Police. With me today is Support Services Commander Kim Scott, also Eric Jensen from IT, Brina Ming, who's our police legal advisor. As we go through the presentation today, I'm going to give you a very brief, real high-level introduction of our program and what we're hoping to accomplish with this. Kim's going to go into the policy discussion of how we've developed our policy and what our policy is going forward. And Eric's here to give you the technical stuff that I don't have the capability of doing, and also to discuss any questions you may have about contract issues that we're bringing before you on the council meeting on Thursday. We started looking at body-worn cameras well over a year ago. This has been a long process. In fact, we started looking at this program before this became a national buzzword and a national topic based on some of the situations that have occurred across the country. And the reason we started looking at this was examining the successes that agencies like the Mesa Police Department here in Arizona, Lake Havasu City Police Department in Arizona, Rialto California Police Department, and many others, through our professional organizations that have been able to bring forward their successes in implementing body-worn camera programs and some of the things that they've seen through the research. Kim's going to describe in a little bit what some of the research studies have said, but the one thing that's overwhelming across the board, and this even came out recently in San Diego Police Department study that was just released over the weekend, Phoenix Police Department study that was released within the last 30 days, that overwhelmingly says that cameras influence behavior, and that the presence of cameras influence the behavior of both the police and the public. It also tells us that, it really provides us with an air of transparency and gives us a picture, literally, of what occurs in an incident. We've also seen the recommendations now coming forward through the President's Task Force and through the Department of Justice that are highly supportive of body-worn camera programs in law enforcement. You may ask, why are we doing this in Gilbert? Here we are, sick and safest, mid-sized, a major city in the United States, very high level of satisfaction with our citizens. I do believe that we have a high level of trust and confidence with our citizens. Bottom line is, we want to keep that. What we find, and the purpose of our program, is to increase that accountability, not only of the police, but also of the public, that it protects our officers from unfounded allegations of misconduct. It allows us to increase our documentation on our use of force and our reviews of our use-of-force process. It increases the quality of our investigations. We've seen through our testing process that officers have the availability to go back and view things on the camera that they may have missed during the investigation or that they may miss during note-taking and those kinds of things. That improves the quality of their reports. The opportunity to reduce liability for our community, and it also provides us with vital and timely evidence and information, you know, during tragic events. And I'll point out the incident in Flagstaff that occurred, that a lot of people didn't like watching that on TV. And the fact that the media put that out there that showed that Travis, where the officer was shot and killed in Flagstaff. But what I'll point out from that is, there was no doubt who pulled the trigger, there was no doubt what led up to that shooting, and there was no doubt what the result of that was. And how can that impact us here? Eric Schuhandler. If Eric Schuhandler was wearing a camera, and I'll say upfront, our plan is not to put cameras on our lieutenants at this time, but if a similar situation like that were to occur again, like what has occurred in our community where the officer was disabled, unable to talk to us, we can get real-time information. And the situation up in Flagstaff, they were able to get real-time information to determine whether they had additional suspects that were out there and to have an idea what had occurred. Situation like Eric's, where Eric can no longer tell us what happened, there would be documentation of the incident, and there would be no doubt, there is no doubt in our mind, who pulled the trigger, but you've got it on camera. And we hope that we don't have a situation like that occur again, but it could happen. Our officers face use-of-force scenarios, all the way from very minor uses of force all the way up to the potential of deadly force situations in our community every single day. We also thoroughly investigate every complaint or allegation of misconduct that comes in from our citizens. The use of the cameras will allow us to even be more accurate in those complaint processes. Many of our complaints end up with a finding of what's called not sustained. And what not sustained means is that we don't know, we can't prove one way or another. Citizen says one thing, officer says something else, no other witnesses. We can't say one way or another whether something actually occurred or not, so we have to call that not sustained. And we certainly hope that through the use of cameras, we can lower that not sustained rate and be able to prove things one way or another.
Chief, can I ask you a question going back to the scenario you mentioned in Flagstaff? Could the cameras, when you talk about real-time data, could the cameras being even on the body or even maybe in the patrol car, send real-time data to someone that may be another set of eyes that may be like in a command center? So a particular call comes out, we know that the officer is now going to maybe approach a particular situation, the cameras are on, you may not have a second police officer there, but could the camera themselves be a set of eyes remotely where, as the officer is engaged, you know, maybe working or- is engaged, you know, maybe working or chatting with the individual, that the other cameras that are around could potentially be a set of eyes that might help inform the officer there? Oh, by the way, you know, there's another suspect sneaking around you that you may not be seeing.
The current technology does not allow for a remote activation and does not allow for transmitting to another location. There is some discussion of that, like for SWAT teams and emergency incidents where we may want to do that. The other thing we don't want to do is have the ability to remotely activate to start watching, I wonder what Tim Dorn's doing right now at 2:00 in the afternoon and who he's talking to, kind of thing. But the, the current technology does not provide for a remote access for that purpose. But what it can do is that through a Bluetooth shared-type phone device, there's an app that allows officers to, they can actually take the camera, put it around a corner, and look on their device to see if there's a suspect around the corner and those kinds of things. They can put it on an expandable baton, put it up into an attic, look around to see if there's a suspect up there. So, that capability is there for the officer to use the cameras for that type of purpose. The one thing that I, that I do want to caution upfront is that the cameras are not a total solution. They are a piece of the puzzle. And I say that because, first of all, we're dealing with technology. A camera can only see what the camera can see. The camera can only record of audio, what is picked up. If there's multiple people talking, multiple noises, you're gonna get the same thing that, that you're gonna have in any type of a crowd situation. It also doesn't tell us what's in the mind of the officer at the time that an incident occurs. What may not, what may be on the peripheral. What did the officer know before he got there? What was the information that he received in the radio call and those kinds of things before he got there? So, we have to be very careful that we don't have preconceived notions and opinions based solely on what we see on, on a video camera presentation. The other thing is, their technology, sorry Mark Kramer, technology breaks, okay? They can malfunction, they can break. An example that I'm gonna give you is that we had one incident, and the way we use these cameras in, in our use-of-force review process is that every use of force that's reported by an officer has to go through, currently goes through a review process. Part of the implementation of the program is the requirement that the personnel through the chain of command that are involved in that process are now required to, to view the videos that come in. That's part of our check and balance. Are they recording when they're supposed to be recording? We're not only looking for appropriate uses of force, we're making sure we're doing things correctly, we're de-escalating when we can, those types of things. We had a situation where an officer made a contact on a curfew violation, two individuals. It turned into a violent confrontation very quickly with one of the suspects. That part of was recorded. Keep in mind, it's a camera, as you get close, about all you're gonna see is the front of that person's chest, but you could see the person assaulting the, the police officer. You can see that the officer's hands are fighting with the suspect. They go to the ground. The switch for the camera is on the front of the camera. As the officer goes to the ground, it depresses the switch, the camera turns off. So, we had to go back, did the officer intentionally turn it off, or did the camera turn itself off? Pretty hard for him to intentionally turn it off when he's going fisticuffs with somebody on the ground. Officer gets in a foot pursuit when the suspect breaks from him. Eventually, the officer catches up to him, looks down, sees that the camera's not on, reactivates the camera, the second confrontation is then caught on camera. So, there are things like that that we have to explain, and the officers have to explain to us when the camera stops working why this was explainable. And again, the, the importance of, we also have to remember that if it involves an investigation, we let, need to make sure that we allow the investigation to play out, to gather all of the facts, not just rely on what we're seeing on a camera. The other thing that I want to tell you is, what you're gonna see through Kim's presentation is, a lot of work and a lot of study and a lot of research has gone into this. We didn't want to just jump into implementing a program. We've examined the Police Executive Research Forum, we've examined IACP, we've examined the recommendations coming out from the ACLU to make sure that the program that we develop, we're doing our best to safeguard the, the privacy and security of, of citizens. The intent is not to record everything. We're not gonna have the cameras on going down the street and videotaping who's in downtown Gilbert tonight. Our bike teams, when they're deployed downtown on Friday and Saturday nights now, are not gonna have the cameras on all the time, just showing who's walking around downtown. It's not for consensual contacts of citizen walking up, hey, can you tell me how to get to Joe's Barbecue? Or when they're in a restaurant, talking to, to people. It's for officer-initiated enforcement-related calls for service and dispatch calls for service that the cameras will be activated. They'll be activated from the time that the officer either initiates the call and contact to the end of the contact. There are some provisions that Kim will go through when they can turn it off. We have a requirement in there that if somebody asks, am I being recorded? Then we're required, unless there's some extenuating circumstance, we're required to tell the person, yes, you're being recorded. If it's a victim or if it's a witness and they request that the recording be discontinued, then the officer has the discretion to discontinue the recording of a victim and of a witness if, if that's requested at the time.
Chief, Councilmember Daniels had a question?
Yes, ma'am.
And I may be jumping ahead here, but are, is, is this considered part of the public record? Would anyone be able to essentially summon this type of recording even if there are no charges? How does that affect, and I'm thinking specifically of like, maybe there's a domestic violence incident and those people wish, you know, the victim wished to remain anonymous, but yet now there's a public record, so.
And it's, it's no different than a police report that may exist and the police report that's gonna accompany the recording right now. Kim's gonna go through and tell you some of the things that we're gonna do redaction-wise to try to protect our victims and witnesses and people in their private homes. But yes, it is subject to, to public record.
And Chief, I don't think this has been finalized, and our interview team may have an answer, but there's a, one of the bills is talking about making it not a public record. And do you know the status of that, or?
I know that it's in discussion and, and it's been in various forms of what would be redacted and not redacted and, and what's withheld. Everything that I've seen in the proposed legislation, other than what could be released, our operational procedures are very close to what's being proposed in the legislation, other than the release of public documents.
Thank you.
So, what I'd like to do now is turn it over to Eric and Kim for Eric to talk to you a little bit about what the contract is and, and what the technology piece of this is, and then Kim will walk through the, the policy that we've got coming forward to you and hopefully for approval on, or for the contract to be approved on, on Thursday night. So.
Hello, Mayor and Council. My name's Eric Jensen. I'm with the IT Department. The request that has been submitted is for a change order. We've used the contract, this is a linking contract with Surprise, for purchasing the initial pilot program. This is a continuation extending it to 139 cameras, 133 of which are chest, and then six which are for the shoulder for the special SWAT teams. The request is for $247,533. That is the initial purchase, and ongoing costs are in the $160,000, $160,000 range. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them on the contract. In terms of technical issues that we've come across, there were a handful of download speed issues. We've worked through some of those. We've seen a few issues dealing with placement of cameras in docks and how that can affect the uploads. Those have all been resolved and even placement of the docks so that we can better be utilized and have better space in the recording room. If you don't have any questions for me, I'll let Kim get to the presentation that she might have.
One question from Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. The cost for storage, you know, I just don't have a sense of this. I'm kinda comparing it to commercial storage, which obviously is a whole different product. I realize that, but this is much, much higher. I think it's 165 annually for the storage, and, and it's a cloud-based storage solution, right? So, we're not bringing in infrastructure. So, can you tell us, why, why is it so much per year? You know, when commercially you can get terabytes and terabytes for obviously a lot less? What, what are we actually getting so much more here?
Good question. The storage is cloud-based. When the cameras are put into the docks, the docks use our Internet technology to send it to evidence.com. Part of the storage cost also includes the proprietary software that Kim will talk a little bit more about that gives the redaction and also works through maintaining the security of the video so that when the video is uploaded, that it is, there's an original copy kept there and then redactions are made after that. So, we have an ongoing security and audit log of what happens to each of the videos. There is also retention policies that are added for different types of video so that they remain with us for specified amounts of time based on the retention policy through the state. The physical space of hard drives, they are using the latest and greatest technology to make sure that it is backed up and has enough capacity for us. Evidence.com is being used by many or all of the TASER customers. Let's see, trying to think if there's anything additional that might be.
Is that the only product that we've looked at? Or is there any, any other, you know, compatible cloud, cloud storage that TASER videos can be uploaded to?
They do have an on-premise solution, and like you said, those can be much cheaper to set up, but in the case of setting up the security, the infrastructure, all of that, there have been numerous studies where it's been far more expensive than the cloud-based.
Thank you. Councilmember Cook?
Since we're talking about technology and video and policy, I know the chief and I have had a couple of conversations about the idea of maybe even capturing video from the cameras at intersections. And the reason why I bring this up, there was an incident in Phoenix last year where a Catholic priest was, was killed, and the suspect took off, but they had a hard time identifying that individual for a while. And I was always curious if we had captured, you know, if, in case this situation were to happen in Gilbert, if we were to capture, you know, traffic flow, identify a vehicle coming from a certain location, and now putting this video potentially in the cloud, do we see anything in the future that might expand this program to maybe do something with those video cameras at our intersections, just for, you know, police, you know, legal activity?
Not at this point. The traffic cams are in a completely different environment. The actual space that we utilize through evidence.com is not just restricted to the video cameras. There are capabilities of using other digital media to be uploaded there for security, but at this point, it is not tied to traffic cameras.
Thank you. Okay, Kim?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I'm Kim Scott. I'm the Support Services Commander, and we've prepared a PowerPoint presentation for you. As I go through it, I'll be glad to take questions. We can go slide by slide, so don't hesitate to stop me. So, today I want to introduce you to the implementation of our body camera selection. We chose TASER, and they have their Axon system. And so, in choosing our vendor, we did so, we did look at other systems, and this does go back to 2013. Mesa was deploying TASER products, so we watched Mesa very closely. And as we talked with them and discovered some of the features of their products, the TASER product, they went with the Axon Flex, which is an eyeglass or shoulder, upper lip mount or collar mount camera. But as talking to them about some of the features, we learned more about the TASER products. In looking at other vendors, they couldn't offer the services that TASER could offer to us, and a lot of these were very desirable. So, features unique to the TASER product was the 30-second buffer. And what that means is, for our camera, and there's one being passed around, the camera is like a DVR in the sense that it's always recording. The buffer process works without audio, but to give you an example of, let's say, an officer walks into a business, and it's, let's say, a fast-food restaurant, and their intention is to order lunch. The camera is recording, and it, what it, what happens is, let's say, the officer encounters a robbery in progress. If the officer activates his camera, the camera from the TASER product, it goes back on a 30-second buffer, and it'll pick up the prior 30 seconds of footage with no audio. So, in theory, the officer doesn't encounter the robbery until he's physically entered the location and actually sees what's happening, but by pressing the button and activating the camera, which I heard it beep, so we're being recorded. So, we may have some live footage we can show you. So, by pressing the button and activating it to actually record what he now identifies as a robbery, the camera actually picks up the 30 seconds prior with audio. This is a unique feature offered by TASER at the time that we were making our vendor selection. Also partnered with that is the evidence.com storage site, which you heard Eric talk a little bit about. It is really the, the brains behind managing all this footage. So, the camera simply records the footage and through an upload process, and basically at the end of the shift, the officer docks that camera into a dock, and through data lines, it uploads all the data into evidence.com. So, we have to manage that data. It has to be sorted and categorized. And think of it as a property and evidence room in the sky. All the principles that apply to managing a property and evidence room, our brick-and-mortar facility, it has to be secure, integrity has to be preserved, we have to be able to produce it on demand. Evidence.com replaces that brick-and-mortar facility and gives us that flexibility. We can search for video, we can impound it, we can safely store it, we can retrieve it, and obviously, we can redact it if we need to, and we can produce it for court. So, evidence.com is really the brains behind the operation. Evidence.com also offers us the ability to share data, video, with our criminal justice partners. So, traditionally, in a paper and pencil world where we have a police report of a crime that perhaps is being investigated by a prosecutor for case preparation for court, we would have to deliver to them a paper copy of that report, or they would have to log into our system and view our report. With evidence.com, we can give access to criminal justice partners like prosecutors, and through a licensing agreement with TASER, they can have login credentials that are securely tracked, that are auditable and accountable, and they can log in and view video from their desktop. So, it, it doesn't necessarily eliminate completely the need to, to take the video and put it on a disk and deliver a disk, but they can certainly, and, and when they're ready, log in and view it. It also, and we can also deliver it into a courtroom in that same manner, assuming that the courtroom is outfitted with that technology. We can actually use the evidence.com site for playback for, for court or for trials. The equipment that you have before you is wireless, so the only thing I didn't bring over was there's a, a bracket. So, and you'll see in the slide presentation, it's center mount generally on, on the uniform. So, there's a bracket that that clips into. TASER's battery, they commit to us 12 hours of battery life, and they've been held, they've held true to that. We've not encountered any battery life problems throughout our testing and evaluation process. So, in terms of why we chose TASER, you know, these were the key highlights. So, research studies, sorry about that. So, the research studies, when, when evaluating how to deploy cameras within the agency, you heard the chief speak to some of the agencies that deployed for us. So, we looked to them to see what they learned and, you know, is it basically worthwhile to do this? Rialto PD in California is probably one of the leaders in deploying cameras and then for a specific research study project. They looked at cameras not only from a workflow perspective and gathering evidence and enhancing transparency, but they looked specifically to see, does the implementation of a camera impact behavior? Not only on the part of the public, but on the part of the wearer. And they found that it did. Their findings are basically summarized in, there's a couple bullet points there that say, citizen complaints decreased by 88% and use-of-force incidents decreased by 60%. What that means is, if the, from their, from their social research, if the camera has the ability to impact behavior, in theory, you'll have less incidents where you have to use force because people are basically behaving better. So, Rialto overwhelmingly found out that use-of-force went down, and in turn, citizen complaints about conduct went down. Mesa, our partner to the north, did similar study. They also deployed the TASER product, and they did a similar research study to see if does, do these cameras impact behavior? And they found similar findings, that citizen complaints decreased by 48% among the test group, and use-of-force incidents decreased by 75%. For our TASON-Axon camera system, the capability, the camera that you have before you gives us the ability to, to film day and night with very clear video, which is nice, and it's important. important. We can't have these things functional only during the daytime. Obviously, they have to operate in a 24-hour environment. The batteries for us is guaranteed for at least a minimum of 12 hours of lifespan, and it's done that and beyond. So we've, like I said, we've had no complaints with the battery life. The cameras are wireless. You can see there, it's mounted about center chest, and that's generally where the camera will be mounted. We've made some exceptions depending on the type of uniform that the officer or employee is wearing. Is, moving it to the right or left may be more suitable depending on their chosen uniform. But the camera, again, is wireless. During our testing and evaluation, we discovered, we deployed only this camera. And part of it was, we were testing this camera to see would it work among all our work groups that were going to eventually end up carrying a camera. What we discovered is we have a CAT team, which is our criminal apprehension team, and they are largely a tactical team. So they were given the same camera, but due to the nature of their work, and they often deploy larger weapons, it was determined that a lot of the video just showed hands on weapons. So it wasn't practical. And in one instance, when bringing a weapon, you know, around, swinging it to basically go on point, the camera was knocked off and went flying. So as a result of that, we decided to look at the collar or eyeglass, which is called the Axon Flex camera, as an alternative option for this particular unit. So TASER loaned us this alternative camera, which we put into, into the field to see, was it more suitable than the body camera? And it turned out, yes, it was. So for the purposes of our proposed purchase, we're asking to purchase a handful of the Axon Flex, the epilip or the eyeglass mount camera, for the purposes of our CAT team, and the remaining units would be the Axon Body Camera. The activation and deactivation, which someone here is familiar with because I heard it turn on, it's two pushes to turn the camera on, Mayor. It's two pushes to turn the camera on and one extended push to turn it off. For our data storage, again, I talked about evidence.com. It's cloud-based storage, basically replaces our brick and mortar facility. One of the interesting things, when we test and evaluate new hardware and new products, we have to integrate it into existing workflows. So currently, when we come across evidence, we identify evidence at a crime scene. That evidence is physically impounded, made safe, it's identified, and then it's transferred over to our property and evidence facility where it's securely kept for court. In this case, we don't have to go through all those physical maneuvers. The evidence is captured on the body camera. At the end of the shift, it's uploaded into evidence.com, and that acts as that secure storage vault for evidence purposes. It comes with a full audit trail, which means that if somebody accesses just by simply viewing, well, I can even take it one step back, if you log into evidence.com, that's tracked. If you view video, that's tracked. If you redact it, it's tracked. If you share it with somebody, that's tracked. And that's important because it's a chain of custody. So if we have to produce this video in court, we basically have to produce a detailed report of where has it been. If we transfer, as an example, a blood kit that's physically at our property and evidence facility over to a lab for analysis, that activity gets tracked. It's tracked on its way out, who transported it, where it went, what time it was delivered, and then it's tracked on its way back in. Evidence.com has that feature built in. It was designed around acting as a secure place to store evidence. So it safeguards, the system also comes with safeguards against unauthorized viewing and deletion. In order to view video in the system, you have to be an authorized user, which means we, the evidence.com for the purposes of Gilbert PD, is customized for our users. Users have to be invited in, and then they set up secure credentials. And once they're invited in, their authority is only, is limited by their permissions that we establish for them. So as an easy example, every user cannot watch everybody's video. So a police officer, a line-level police officer, has the authority to view his or her own video. They don't have the authority to delete their video. That's based on roles and restrictions we enable in the system. The system is designed to retain it, and that's, again, customized by Gilbert. So all our retention periods, depending on what type of footage we're talking about, we could have something from a traffic stop all the way to a homicide scene. Internally in the system, once that video is categorized, which is done in the field by the officer, embedded in that category is a retention period that complies with the Arizona State laws for retention. So in the case of a felony investigation, we're retaining it in theory for 99 years. The data, again, is shareable. I talked about we'd be able to share it with criminal justice partners. So the nice thing is, we can share through invited users who have a license to use. We can extend a license. A prosecutor can log in and view video related to a case that they're preparing, or we can deliver it by link. And the link has, there's limits on the link. We can say, hey, we'll deliver a link to you, and it may expire after 72 hours. Anything we share, or any user that accesses, doesn't alter the original video. So in the case of redaction, and we'll talk about that as it's on an advanced slide, the original video is always preserved and intact. As part of our, whoops, sorry about that. As part of our implementation, one of the things we knew we had to do is implement a general order, basically a policy governing the use of the camera, and it's extensive. It talks about when to record, when not to record, who can review video, and what the review of video should be used for, and I've highlighted there, to prepare investigative reports. So an officer goes out in the field, the camera's capturing data, it's filming, and they conduct an investigation where they interview folks, may have crime scene footage, et cetera. The officer goes back, reviews that video as they prepare their police report, with the idea that we'll get more thorough detail in a police report and more accurate accountability in a police report. That video footage can also be used as evidence in court, and it can be reviewed prior to going to court so that the officer's better prepared for testifying in court. We use it for critical incident review, and a good example of that is every use of force situation that occurs is reviewed in the police department. The video is now another layer in that review process. If video was in play, it's reviewed as part of the incident review, also for citizen complaints. If we receive a citizen complaint, video can be reviewed as part of that process or that investigation. When to record? Generally, the, you know, as an overall, there's a lot of bullets up there, but generally, it's for any professional activity that a police officer's going to encounter. So dispatch calls for service, self-initiated calls for service, so a traffic stop would be recorded, building searches, you're contacting all persons during a dispatch call for service. The idea is to capture public content, or public contact. Arrests, high-risk operations, probation or parole checks, sex offender verifications, the camera should be on and recording. So the chief had mentioned that a casual encounter, can I get directions to here, or somebody simply engaging an officer or an employee in social conversation, that's not the intent of it. It's really for the professional duties of the department, whether dispatched or self-initiated. And that's kind of what this list, you know, just gives specific examples.
Kim, and to Chief Doran, let me interrupt real fast, and you'll understand why in just a moment. To the council, this is part of an agenda item, but it's also policy and related to strategy. And we have not had a chance as a council to talk about this in an open forum. And so I'm just curious to get a feel for, from a council perspective, supportive, any concerns, anything that we should be aware of. Councilmember Cook?
I've had many discussions with the chief about this. In fact, probably over a year or maybe two years of implementing this policy or program with the town of Gilbert, so I'm very supportive of having that to protect both our public safety officers as well as our, you know, residents and citizens that, you know, are engaged with that.
Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I like a lot of what I'm hearing here. I guess I'm reserving my final decision as I ask some more questions. I got a few more things to look into. I do like the idea that it protects both parties. I really think that's great. My only, my only thought is, I just think about where we are, and there's an expense associated with this. I'm just trying to figure out if this is a necessary expenditure, you know, in light of the town that we live in. I know there's other places it would be a no-brainer, absolutely necessary. But there's going to be an ongoing cost to this, and that's something we always have to consider, if there's a return on investment. And so I'm just trying to kind of process that, Mayor. But otherwise, I mean, I think it seems very beneficial in a lot of ways.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ray?
I appreciate the info that we've gotten thus far, both in this meeting and as I'm sure each council member has spoken with the chief or different people over across the street. And so far, I like what I'm hearing and appreciate the time that chief has spent with us and with me talking about it.
Councilmember Bridget Peterson, I want to this way.
Mayor, I'm very appreciative of the presentation. I think every question that I've jotted down, as you've gone through, you've answered them. I'm really supportive of what we're seeing here tonight.
Councilmember Daniels?
I think my only concern really is the privacy of some of the people involved. I think about when we call 911 as a citizen, that that really isn't, you don't always expect to be recorded, our firefighters and things like that, who are also essentially put in some positions that may at some point warrant them wearing a body worn camera. And it's, while they do a different and specific duty, I can see where they may also wish to have that type of protection at some point. And then I think of some of our frontline employees, and maybe, you know, I could see how this could become something else. But keeping it within the realm in which we're discussing it today, I don't have a problem as long as there's the, there is the acknowledgement. I think of children being on camera and then sort of being exposed to that. We have a disclaimer on all of our council meeting agendas that says that if they're going to be recorded, and there's certain parameters that we have to follow there. So I do think about the privacy of the citizen. Granted, if they're in the act of a crime, I don't necessarily think that they deserve privacy. But for those who are victims and who are, you know, calling in a desperate time, I do, I do have concerns about that, which I'm sure we can address through policy and administration.
Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. I've just tried to make a list here of the benefits. You know, what are the taxpayers getting for, you know, roughly quarter of a million dollars a year in new cost? Because above and beyond what the, what we see here, we have FTEs that are going to be dedicated for all the editing. So that's, that's cost dedicated to this. And I've got the three things that we're going to get out of this, if I'm understanding this right. Definitely more efficient in terms of the backend paperwork and processing, and more effective in that. I really like that. I think that will actually save a bunch of money, too, even though, you know, this is new dollars, new line item. Decreased use of force and decreased citizen complaints. Use of force, you know, decreasing that, I think that's, that's a good benefit. Citizen complaints, that's probably a big money saver, too, I guess. So that's kind of where I'm balancing. Generally, I like where this is going. I have a couple more questions on it. That's kind of where I'm at right now.
And one reason why I interrupted is just to get a feel for that. And in 30 seconds, I'll share that similar feelings. And of course, you look at the cost, and at the same time, the influence on behavior is hard to quantify, a dollar amount for that. But that's a, I think it's a very positive impact. And I know, talking to the chief, and this is leadership for the future, and so we appreciate you moving ahead and looking ahead. Now, here's the reason why I interrupted, and it's probably three things. One, because of two other meetings scheduled, and we do have the flexibility to have some more discussion on Thursday night, I'd probably try and wrap this up. Pending, there may be a couple of things you feel like need to be discussed today, and that's, that's fine. But we do have the option to continue some more discussion on Thursday, and we could have the PowerPoint sent to us, which would help us in preparation for Thursday. But let me go back to other items that may be important to discuss tonight. Let's still have that discussion. Otherwise, we'll have you send it to us, and we can continue this discussion on Thursday.
We just put this up in, very briefly, and probably go to the next one, I think, that talks about some of the privacy concerns, what we're trying to do through redaction. There's two things. There's audio redaction, there's video redaction. That the, the audio portion, and there's two types of releases. One is for prosecution in courts, where all we have to be concerned about is criminal justice information and the PII, personal identifying information, social security number, dates of birth, those kinds of things that will get redacted out, going out to the courts and going out publicly. Video-wise, what we're trying to do is trying to balance the public's right to know, to trying to protect people's privacy as much as we can under certain circumstances, and I think it's the next one, Kim, that we're going to go in and we're going to shade out the video of victims' interviews, witness interviews. If we're in somebody's personal home or that's not a public place, we're going to shade that out unless there's a public interest. And where the public interest comes in, if it's an allegation of misconduct against police officer or use of force, that I think overrides the privacy part that we have to disclose that to the public. But those are some things we're trying to do to look at protecting that as much as we can. And the only other thing that I really need to be forthcoming to you is that we're doing the best that we can to limit the cost. Is it going to cost us more time? Yes, it is. We know that. We're asking for a position in the budget for a records redaction clerk. Phoenix is using a rule basically of one full-time position just to meet the court's requirements per 200 cameras. We're asking for that position in the budget. We don't know what the impact's going to be on the prosecutor. We hope that more cases will be pled out, but there's maybe an opportunity they're going to have to review more. They may come to you later and say, we need more staff in the prosecutor's office. So I want to be very forthcoming to you with that, that I can't make a commitment to you. What I asked for today is all that we're going to ask for for the next five years. We don't know until we get into this. The best thing we could do is look at the best practices of other agencies and what the resource requirements have been to meet our current needs right now and evaluate that as we go Part of that benefit is, on the complaint side of the house, what we're seeing, and even through our initial testing process of, a lot of times when people make an allegation, what we're able to do, because their personal protection, personal information isn't protected against them, we can say, come in, we've got it on video, come in and view it, because what you're going to see is not what you're telling us happened. We've had several situations where they then say, never mind, I just wanted to let you know about it. Or they come in and view the camera and say, we're done. That complaint would take us days of tying up an investigator to go through a formal complaint investigative process. So I hope that helps address where we may be going in the future, and I know we're short on time, so.
Town manager, manager?
Mayor, if I could just summarize, take what chief said, and thank you, chief. As well, we talked a lot about protection of our residents, which is paramount, as well as protection of our officers, but also giving us another tool so that for our third branch of government, through our prosecuting attorney's office and our municipal courts, that we do the best job possible in bringing those who are guilty to justice and not prosecuting the innocent. And this will be another very useful tool in which we've got video and audio evidence to help us determine whether or not a crime's occurred, we've got the right person. So as the chief mentioned, we're still trying to understand what the full impact is. And as we've talked internally, I think there'll be a lot of legislation and litigation through the years, over the years, as we perfect these programs. But it will be an extremely effective tool for us as well to make sure that we are doing our best to prosecute the guilty and bring them to justice and avoid prosecution of the innocent.
Thank you. To the council, if we stop at that point, at this point, does that work? Okay, thank you. And to chief and Kim, thank you, and Eric and team members. We'll continue this on Thursday night, and then if you can send us the PowerPoint, that would be appreciated. The agenda item number five, we'll do in about a minute. And Jordan, I don't know if you're still there. There was a PowerPoint from Kurt Sharp, which had a page two or mark. Maybe you can get that. And I'll, this will be our agenda item number five. And to councilmember Bridget Peterson, and councilmember Taylor, and Andy, I know you're prepared, but will, was there anything, well, this is what, I'll mention this, and then if we need anything else brought up right now, if to plant a seed, we'll do so, and then we'll end the study session. So agenda item number five relates to our boards and commissions. We had a discussion on this at the retreat, and it's kind of a mid-year point to come back and look at, remind us what we talked about, look at progress, and still some issues we want to bring up related to our boards and commissions. But this slide is related to two things. National Volunteer Week is the second week of April. That's when we have a council meeting. And so the bottom part, we would like to invite at least one individual from each board and commission to come, and this is at the bottom, to the Tuesday, April 14, 5:00 p.m. council meeting. And when that agenda item to recognize our volunteers comes up, they would come to the front, and they would be the volunteers that we would thank. And so the clerk's office will start that process. The top part is a recognition opportunity. At the Art Intersection, there are two new displays. And so the thought was, we picked, assuming all our taxes are done, Wednesday night, April 15, from 4:30 to 6:00 p.m. at the Art Intersection, we would invite all members of boards and commissions to go to the Art Intersection, those that can attend, 4:30 to 6:00. About 5:00 p.m., we have just a short recognition program. And the Arts Board is meeting at 5:30, and so we would dismiss them to get to their meeting. The Basement Gallery has some specific portraits that would be of interest to our HRC team members, but that would also be open to everyone. So that's proposed, and just got started today. So you haven't heard about it, but if you can get that on your calendars, you'll get more details about it. more details about it. So to councilmember Peterson, councilmember Taylor, anything else that would be important to bring up on agenda item number five?
I don't think we have time to bring anything else up. I appreciate everything you've been working to do over the past week or so, since we contacted you about it. Thank you.
We'll continue the discussion. And to our town attorney, I'm looking at, on the study session, it didn't say to recess this, but I assume we want to recess the study session and accept a motion to adjourn into the executive session, is that correct?
Yes.
Or do we do that upstairs?
We do that upstairs.
Okay. We'll meet upstairs, and for this study, this study session is adjourned. Thank you.